I don't know that we have anyone here, but since it's after our only item, but we'll check back after we're through to see if anyone else has shown up regarding that, too. So you're here just to observe, are you not? Yes, thank you. All right. Do we need to do just who's here? Just go down the list or not?
When we have just a work session, no council meeting, the mayor has asked that we do roll call.
Okay. All right, let's do the roll call.
Okay.
Mayor Kelvin, council member Nelson.
Here.
Christiansen, Chuantas.
Here.
Alvarado.
Here.
Osmus, Mesky.
Here.
Klaueman. Fagerly.
Here.
All right. Five present, four absent. Thank you. Okay, our goal for tonight is just to get the five-year capital improvement in front of you, along with the vehicle replacement plan. And Mr. Okens is going to go ahead and do that, and I believe that Mr. Peterson is also going to share how that committee works to put this information together. So again, Steve's going to present it at a high level for us to take the information, and our plan is to do more in-depth detail with that on the 13th of August, along with maybe some additional financial information on revenues, maybe a little workshop kind of thing regarding the budget and any questions that people may have. So without any more, I will ask Mr. Okens to go ahead and walk us through this.
Mr. or Madam Chair, members of the council, included in your packet was the Excel spreadsheets that staff works on from a process to include. I do have a PowerPoint presentation, and IT is working on getting that so that we have it on the screen, and until they are successful in doing that, I'll maybe just do some opening remarks, and then hopefully they can get that and so we can see that. I did not include that. What I did there was went back to last year when we presented the capital improvement program to you in September and used that same similar format summarizing the items that you have in detail in your report. Part of the process in the budget calendar called for the council to have a work session on capital improvements the middle of July. We are running just a little bit late on that, but this is still ahead of schedule compared to last year and previous years in the fact that the charter calls for the mayor to have this prepared three months before the budget that he has to have it presented to the public. The charter was changed back when the Charter Commission met in that the charter had required that the mayor present the budget to the city council by the first meeting in September. That was primarily due to the truth and taxation laws that the state of Minnesota had in that for truth and taxation and notifications to the general public on what their property taxes would be. That law has been changed to where the preliminary levy has to be certified by the end of September and not the 15th, which is what the statute required, thus requiring an earlier presentation of the budget than what now exists. So the final budget is scheduled to be presented to the council, or the mayor's proposed budget is scheduled to be presented to the council in the first meeting in September, which is September 4th. The final action in the public hearing on the budget does not actually happen until the first meeting in December. So with those changes and changes in timelines, I think there is some latitude that has been afforded the council as far as the presentation of the capital, and that's why we are working on changing the process and the information as it's presented to you and the general public. The three months actually would start from December, which would be when we presented it to you last year in September. And this affords the council a little bit more time to see what the preliminary recommendations have been to the mayor, and the mayor and the finance chairman have actually met once and reviewed those and have kind of pared it down to what the department directors had proposed to them. But one has to keep in mind and remember that this is the mayor's budget, this is the mayor's recommendation to present to the council, and so there will be some changes, and these are the preliminary numbers at this point. One thing I would like to remember that to remind the council is that you received a notification to submit requests, recommendations, and that to the mayor. Our office has received one request, it has nothing, or the request that we have received does not affect the capital that you have in front of you at this point, but I think the notice gave the council to the end of July to get your requests in, but I think if we, after tonight's meeting, if the council would still get them in to the mayor and administrator by the end of this week. We are scheduled to meet, the administrator and I, the first full week in August, and then the mayor, finance chairman, administrator and I meet the second full week in August to total all the operating requests as well as the capital requests. So there's still a little bit of time yet if the council has some capital after tonight's discussion. I'm not seeing a screen of my PowerPoint presentation, but maybe what I can do is just talk about, and we've talked about this before, the process that we use as staff to get requests to the mayor for his consideration. The presentation tonight is dealing with the capital improvements, which is a definition of anything over $5,000 and a useful life of over two years, and the vehicle replacement program. Both of these processes are driven by a staff of four or five department directors who receive all the requests. Mr. Peterson does chair the capital improvement side. I have chaired the vehicle replacement side this year. And so we meet as a group and review any requests that we receive, and then submit it to the administrator and mayor for their consideration. And the items that, I don't know if Mr. Peterson brought down the rating criteria that he uses for his committee, and I think he's indicating to me that he has, so I'll let him kind of go through the process that he held this year and the timelines for review of those. Bruce.
Thanks, Steve. Mayor Protem, members of the council. The process is actually pretty simple. We send a notice out to all of the department heads or the persons that would be affected by their departmental CIP budgets annually, and we inform them of the process that's going to be followed, the timing, the schedule of the process, and we ask that they submit for five years, for the upcoming five years, for projects that they see or they anticipate. We also ask them to provide us with comments on projects that were requested previously and not funded, or to remind us which projects were funded out of the previous year, just so we know and can avoid duplication as much as possible. So we'll get a list from each of the departments that enumerates their requests. They will be broken down into five years. They also identify the proposed funding sources as well as the estimated dollar amount. They typically will also specify whether it's a priority, one, two, or three, for funding. The committee takes each of those, and for each request, they look at six different rating criteria in analyzing those requests, and those criteria are legal mandates. Will a proposed project bring the city into compliance with an existing or new legal mandate? Is it local, state, or federal? What's the risk of noncompliance? Is there a timeframe for compliance? Those types of questions. We look at maintenance of existing assets. Does the project enhance or maintain a current asset of the city? Does it extend a useful life? Is it a replacement for a deteriorated asset? Is it an investment that's part of a larger city asset? Or does it produce a change in operating costs, either positive or negative? We look at sustainability. Is the project based on what makes sense now or what makes the most sense for the future? Does it enhance efforts to maintain a healthy and habitable environment? Does it promote or facilitate the creation of wealth and employment opportunities in the community? Does it do what is fair to all? Does it represent a fiscally responsible decision considering the current and future impact to the organization? The fourth criteria is reduce or offset cost. Does a project provide for reduced cost, current or future, to the city? Does it offset costs through additional revenues or partnerships? Does it improve service at the same cost or deliver service at less cost? That's a major criteria that's looked at. Does it offer the prospect of reduced or beneficial operations and maintenance costs? Does it provide a return on investment? Does the project allow a reduction in cost to the city through a partnership or other funding sources? Does it provide economic efficiency, reduce costs per unit of service delivered? The fifth one is critical public safety needs or concerns. Does the proposal address an existing or potential threat to lives or property? Would the project reduce the risk of death and injuries due to transportation incidents? Would it reduce the risk of damage to or loss of public or private property? Would it facilitate responsive emergency services? Would the project improve the safety of people using public facilities? And the final criteria we look at is meet council priorities. Does the proposed project address an issue or concern that has been identified as a council priority? Is it part of a comprehensive or a strategic plan? Or has the project been deemed important by multiple members of the council? So each of those are looked at in analyzing each request, and they are scored based on those six requirements, and what you see when it comes to you is the composite score for each of the requests. And historically, those composite scores have been used to be the basis for most of the funding decisions through the CIP process.
Thank you, Bruce. And then on the vehicle replacement side, staff meets primarily, and this year's committee was the police chief, fire chief, and the public works director and myself, and those forms and process historically have been sent out. What we do is schedule them based on useful life. Our committee looks at those that are scheduled and makes some minor adjustments, and then what we do is send out a form to have the operator, the supervisor, the mechanic all comment on the vehicles that we have recommended to see if they still warrant to be replaced. If not, they will be moved back in the schedule, and then those forms are sent to the administrator and mayor to review and consider for funding into the year, and that's the list that you see in front of you. We talked about the vehicle and capital improvement as the two processes. These do not actually, at this point, involve major, real major capital requests that the council may have, only for the simple fact that last year we had the retreat prior to this process starting and had guidelines, and we used those to put together the 2018 budget. There has been discussion about possibly having another retreat or a working session to talk about capital outside of this one, as far as buildings and other types of major projects that may be in process. And what one has to remember is that the process does kind of go along as we go, and there may be projects that come up during that process, and so then they have to be considered and inserted. The vehicles that we discussed were, fire department has a pickup, the civic center mower, police has four squads. These are pretty standard useful life and usage amounts. You'll notice that this mower is considerably less than when you get to the public works. Those are a little bit bigger and don't need to be handled. A lot of the outer areas at the civic center are handled by public works. So public works, you see they're scheduled for four mowers. They do this for parts primarily, same with pickups and larger dump trucks. They are also scheduled for a sweeper or a rack. It's to maintain the fields, I believe, a dump truck, and the pothole trailer. Waste treatment has a tractor and a pickup to scheduled. Major projects that we're looking at this year compared to last year is that we have the pavement management system, which is scheduled at 4.8 million. That's kind of a placeholder. I don't believe, and if there are questions in regards to which specific streets, we can ask public works director if that is it, but at this point in time, they're normally a placeholder. We have bonding of 3.6, municipal state aid, which is a million dollars, which is about the annual allotment we receive from the state of Minnesota, and the local cash of 150 to handle those. And those are all detailed, again, on your spreadsheets that were included in your packet. Cooperative projects that we have listed in the spreadsheet are Robins Island, the mayor at this point, since there's been discussion with a local option sales tax, at this point is indicating that that would be the funding source for that. If any of these projects, where there are partnerships or additional funding, change between now and December when we do the final presentation, those discussions will take place during the budgeting process. The auditorium at this point is that he wants staff to look harder for grants and historical grants that may be available, since that building has a historical status assigned to it. And the fire department, the civil defense sirens, is he wants staff at this point to look for grants and try that. If the grants are not successful, then we would have to have the discussions about an alternative funding source or delay of the projects. Airport funding there is primarily state and federal, and that's for the runway taxi lane rehab, and those are the cooperative projects that we have. The projects that are being generally funded by department include the information technology, the new servers and storage arrays. Fire department, the outdoor warning siren is actually, should be removed from this page and is included with the partnerships, and that was kind of a change in the process. Auto extraction equipment, thermal imaging camera, and the HVAC for the office and training rooms. Park department, since we will have, the council has established a new department of the park department, some playground equipment of $100,000 a year until it gets caught up for the safety replacement that we've scheduled. Sperry Hilltop Tennis Court overlays. Public Works has a brine mixing station, and that is for the new treatment for snow removal. The civic center has some, the bleacher replacements that was in last year's but was removed and delayed. They are getting to a point now where, after review, there gets to be a labor and safety issue because of the weight and getting those moved in and out. Cardinal Arena, there's a wall rehab in the Cardinal Arena that's, I think, original from when the building was built. The aquatic center, again, was delayed. It was originally scheduled this year, but will take place in the spring of next year at this point. Waste treatment, there's some Eagle Lake improvements that have been put forth with the city taking over Eagle Lake, starting in January. The Sperryville lift stations are scheduling new pumps and a couple trailers for the portable generator and portable pumps, and those are primarily, again, somewhat related to the lift stations and an additional maintenance that will have to happen on Eagle Lake. This is a summary of the funding that is included in your packets. The general fund is scheduled at 2.3. That includes the vehicles and the total that is on your capital improvement. Bonding at 3.6. Waste treatment, which is an enterprise and comes from the waste treatment rates of 600, low over 600,000, and the partnerships, which would be the municipal state aid and airport and those at 2.4. That would include the local option sales tax. For a total of 9.1. The program that we had last year with the buildings was about 17 million, and historically it has been in the 7 million. I'd look at that.
Did you say the partnerships include local option sales tax? Is that what you're saying?
Pardon me?
The partnerships?
That includes the 300,000 that was on the item ice of local option sales tax.
I think the total that's on the sheet, it's listing state aid and federal, is 1,877, so the difference between those two would be grants or local option sales.
Grants, local option sales, yes.
At this point in time?
At this point in time. And again, Madam Chair, that this is the status that the mayor has, has met once on. These are, due to the process, will be reviewed again once the operating revenues and expenses are tallied and totaled, and then determined on if there are additional funds that were items can be added into this or items that need to be removed. But again, this is earlier in the process than what has normally happened, and so be happy to answer any questions that the council may have.
So once again, our goal for tonight was just to get this out in front for you to be able to look at the detail, as we talked about, if there's any requests, that that can still be open past July 31st, if you still want to submit something with that. And so this, the goal was to present it at a high level, to see that it is available there, and I don't know. We are planning to meet on the 13th to go through it in detail and to see if there's anything else, questions. Do you want to address any of the other years we received or any of that information, or just keep that for now?
Well, the, as I mentioned, we did do a historical look at the capital versus the operating budget or the total budget, and went back to the resolutions, and the average is about 6 million, 5 to 6 million dollars in relationship to about a $30 million operating budget. And so what happened in, basically in 2008 through 2010, we had some unallotment of local government aid, and the council at that time basically delayed a number of capital items, and we've talked about that, as far as the need to do some catch-up. And so that's kind of what we're seeing here in 18 and 19 and probably into 20, will be the need to catch up on not only facilities but other types of improvements as well.
I did have one other, I know you talked about streets, and I know I've gotten requests with kind of where streets are at. I know we have a ranking system. Is that something that could be shared with the council with where streets rank or what you're looking at for next year? You don't, I'm not looking for it tonight, I'm just wondering if it could be available for discussion in the street program next time, so.
Yeah, Madam Chair, I'm glad you're not looking for it tonight, because I don't have those ranked for next year yet, but yeah, we've got that, every street in town on the database and what the, what we call the PCI, pavement condition index, is for each street. And I just recently had the guys print out streets that would be eligible for rebuild versus eligible for overlay to start looking at that for the next, for the next couple of years.
Okay. So the figures that are in there, do you have an idea of what streets you're talking about for next year? I mean, is that something that we could share, that we could get and review, like, in August 13th, or are you not there yet?
I'm not there tonight. I can get you some ideas, and we can discuss those. Obviously, there's more than enough streets to reconstruct and more than enough to overlay, and so I could give a couple options of areas that are scattered around town and then let you guys kind of discuss them as well, if you'd like.
Madam Chair, if I could just mention that in setting up the Dropbox that the council has access to, as well as the public on our city's website, the Dropbox, we have set up three basic folders. One has working documents from the department head level as it progresses up to the administrator and mayor and finance chairman. Then there's a folder for those documents, and then the final documents that come to the council. So there are three folders so that we can track changes as they go from one level to the next and then come to the council and then to the public for the public hearing in December. So any documents that the council would get would be out on Dropbox under the 2019 budget and would be available in that folder.
Would you also be willing to review the schedule for August? There's some community meetings that are going to be scheduled. Is it August or September? I forgot.
September, Madam Chair. August, the first full week, as I mentioned, in August, the administrator and I are scheduled to review all the department requests and be able to put together those numbers to the mayor. The second full week in August, then the mayor and the finance chairman and staff will review those numbers and put together a balanced budget. In September, the first meeting in September, September 4th, the mayor is scheduled to present the budget to the council, his final recommendations, and then has wanted to schedule community meetings for input every Tuesday after that for the month of September and October and later if needed.
Okay.
And we're still working on a location as far as holding those meetings.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions? Councilmember Mesky.
Could you explain, is the top score in your rubric for the CIP budget, is it 40?
It would, it would be 60. It would be 10 points per classification of the six categories.
All right. So the highest on here, we're looking at a couple 40s of how they were scored. Okay. And then I have a specific question. In light of our discussions we've had about City Hall and so on, I see in here the auditorium, and it has elevator and bathroom, and I see that that, I'm assuming is a matching grant that is out there with 250 in both of those cash and grant categories.
That has been the direction of the mayor to pursue that. There's nothing awarded at this point, but he wants the staff to pursue a matching grant.
There are discussions about repurposing that building, or has that not happened? Or is that something to come later? Because that's a fairly substantial investment into that facility.
Yeah, basically, that did come from staff originally for the full amount, and then he has directed it to search out a grant for a 50%.
Okay. And just on the same thing on the auditorium, did the tuck pointing ever get done on the auditorium?
The tuck pointing did not. There was $100,000 budgeted for tuck pointing. Part of that, the council had reallocated, and I, you'll have to forgive me, I don't remember exactly what for at this point.
I just remember it was two, and I just don't see it that on any of the subsequential years. So it's something I guess we'll have to talk about at some point of, if we're going to make it, if we do get a grant and do some substantial work in there and put things in there, we have to make sure that we actually address the entire facility, but.
Is it a preservation grant that he's?
Preservation Alliance of Minnesota, I believe, is where he wants staff to first look, but any type of foundations as well and those types of additional partnerships that we can find.
Yep, all right.
There are, if you look on 2020, there are substantial items in the auditorium that are listed there right now.
Oh, I know, I don't see tuck pointing amongst them.
The discussion that happened, and maybe Public Works Director Christiansen can add to what I know anyway, is that at a staff level, there was discussion about the $100,000 was an estimate received if the tuck pointing was done during the spring or summer in the prime time, but it got later on into the fall, and so then there would have had to been some scaffolding and closing and that, which would have raised the cost.
Sure. I don't need to go any deeper in it now, but that's obviously something we need to talk about of what we're doing with that building.
I think that might be a good example, that if you have some questions, that you, that we can ask those to be prepared to have that discussion on the 13th.
August 13th would be a work session of the council.
On the CIP.
Yep.
Are we prepared to have a discussion about what we're planning to do, long-term facilities with the auditorium on the next month?
The fact that it's in here right now, just to ask the question what the plan is for next year, I would say would be what we're looking for. Go ahead, Councilmember Christiansen.
Thank you. Well, as you know, I've called this a wish list for many years. Just because it's in the CIP doesn't mean it's going to get done or it can be changed. I noticed this year seems pretty reasonable, 1.584 under cash, but some of that would be, is local option sales tax in on that in any one of these? Is it just the pavement management for Robins Island? None of those under cash are local option sales tax.
That's correct. That's a, that column is totally listed under.
I see that. I don't see it down the road in 2020, 2021, and 2022. I don't see local option sales tax. But I do see that they're all over $3 million the next four years after 19.
And I think some of that has to do with the timing, as I mentioned in my remarks, is that some of this transpires after these documents are reviewed by staff at the staff level, and so there's always got to be an opportunity to add those items, not only from maybe civic groups or other requests that we receive, but from the council as well, up until when the mayor does his final, and that's why it's important. If there are questions or projects that the council wants, that they submit the forms that were sent out to them to the mayor for his consideration.
To my recollection, there's about $1 million each year that's really available for the CIP in cash. Could you tell us where the balance of that money would come from when it's over that?
The million dollars that you're referring to had been a target by past mayors and those types of, to try to, to set a level for staff to look at. That has not been the case in 18 or 19. The dollars, the primary dollars that come from that are. case in '18 or '19. The dollars, the primary dollars that come from that are carryover from previous years. The carryover, and you'll be getting the audit report on August 20th, will indicate there's slightly under $800,000 that happened to be carryover from '17. It's in the $750,000 range.
Okay, so anything over that, where does that money come?
That would be budgeted for, out of available revenues.
Elsewhere.
That are generated in general operating, primarily local government aid, property taxes, intergovernmental transfers, any available revenues.
Unspent funds for that year?
That would, that could be part of them as well. I know in '18, the mayor looked at the utility fund that helps fund the street program and allocated $600,000 towards the street program. So, those fund balance reserves would also be in consideration, not only by the mayor, but by the council as well.
Okay. I also noticed one other item on it that's been there a couple times, and that's auto extrication equipment by the Fire Department. You know, we have a Candy High County Rescue Squad, and they've got, I think, three trucks available now with that equipment, and I don't know why we would jump into the mix and put it into our Fire Department also. I've been critical of that in the past, and I will continue to be, because we have a pretty good rescue squad. And again, they have three trucks with that available equipment in there, and if necessary, maybe the Fire Department could take one of those trucks instead. I mean, if we could work out a deal with them, but I don't see a need for us getting into that venue, would you say? Anyway, that's it.
Okay. In, in regards to that item, I would ask that the Fire Chief bring information on August 13th, with which I understand there's a lot of local fire departments that have the extrication equipment. There was a discussion when we were going through the CIP about also any costs that might be related to that regarding training or any other costs other than the equipment. So, if you would be willing to share with us kind of how Candy High County, the other fire departments work, and some of the questions, I think, that you have been bringing this forward with, and then what other costs would be available, I think that would be good for us to hear on the 13th also. Any other questions? Yes, sir. Mr. Mesky?
I share some of the concerns that Councilmember Christensen's talking about, of how we only have had so much money, and we put these on here. So, I really appreciate the scoring rubric on here. It would be, now that I know it's out of 60, it would be very helpful, I think, to have sort of levels set on these, like if 40 or above is a critical and sort of those kind of disclaimers, so you can look at it and make sure that if there isn't enough, and there are not alternative funding sources, that we are making sure that we fund those that are of the highest priority as we move forward. I don't know, you can make that cleaner, but I mean, to me, as I look at this, if it's a, if it's a scoring rubric out of 60, I mean, we have some of these things that are going to fall below 50%. I don't know, does that make them not as valuable? I would guess not, but there needs to be, it's hard for me to quantify that when I see those numbers, because I don't know the value of those, or I'd, and I'll go back and check, as you pointed out, the historical piece of how they move through, what things have been changed and diminished. But I like them, they give me a priority listing, but I don't really know how to interpret those, other than to say they're out of 60.
We, as staff, do have the six criteria, and they will rank higher in, let's, let's use an example of meet council priorities. They may receive, maybe receive the maximum amount of points available there at 10.
Sure.
And some of the other areas of a reducer offset cost may get zero. And we have all those compilations at a staff level and are available to the mayor for his consideration when he's looking at that.
And they're in that folder now that's on the site?
They are not there at this point. They, that would be available, again, you know, if the mayor would want to share that, or the council would give us the direction to make that available.
All right.
Your PowerPoint presentation will be out on the Dropbox, is that what you?
Yes, it will be in Dropbox tomorrow.
Okay, all right. I was just going to comment on the other end of the scale. Having gone through the list of the mayor, anything that didn't rank 25 was dropped. My observation there is there, there were a couple of things that I think could create staff efficiencies that perhaps is the first time around for, for it to be brought up, but minimal amounts of money that could maybe help with staff. In one in particular was a e-parking ticket system, and so it doesn't, it doesn't fit into, I think, the same kind of criteria that some of the other CIP items do, and so I think that was a question for me with, when you look at the whole process, I understand the ranking of it, but there perhaps are some smaller items in there that could create efficiencies that aren't meeting the test because we have lots of other things that are ranking higher.
And, and that, Madam Chair, I believe the mayor will probably, and in the past, has taken into consideration when we get to the point of discussing the total budget, including the operating, again, if there are dollars available of putting some of those requests back in, and if there are not, then looking at the, at the level of funding for capital versus operating costs.
The other thing, too, I think the mayor, when he went through, was some of the things that were familiar, that are, he thought there were other opportunities for funding, was encouraging staff to go back and look at those, too. And so, if that's not the case, there are some things that were removed that perhaps need to be done, and I think it's just a question of making sure that we're using our resources in the best way and looking for other opportunities, so. Any other questions?
Any way, any way you can quantify this and make it much cleaner is always going to be encouraged, because when you're, you don't want to take, I want to take out some of that subjectivity out of the process and make sure it's an equitable system. So, I like the direction we're going. I will check into those other pieces.
And Bruce can add to my comments, too, and I had to leave the meeting early this year, but there is a discussion among staff when we're reviewing them, where some people may feel that it warrants a higher number or a lower number, and so that evaluation takes place at that level.
Good.
Is this, this is staff's first kind of glance of the next documents, too. I know you're putting it out there for them to review, so I would guess, just like we have questions, they may have some questions, too. So, I would see this as a work in progress, and I think that's what this meeting tonight was just intended, to get it in front of us, so that you can take a deeper look and go from there.
Yes, Madam Chair, and it will be coming again back to the full council. If you have, if you hold a work session or a priority or a planning session sometime in August or sometime prior to the mayor presenting, even after the mayor presents his budget, again, one has to remember is the budget is a working document, and it is always subject to change by the council.
Any other questions? All right, if not, we will take this for information. I see no one here from the public who wishes to speak. Is there anything else we need to discuss tonight? Otherwise, we will be done. Thank you.